What's the speaker?
David Webb's gonna be here. I told him he will let you know when he's here, because I'm my last.
Yeah, like.
I'd like to call the regular schedule. Please have a hush on contributions to order. Um, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming. Uh, safe and fresh.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone in the fort. As Ms. Bass is making way to a podium, I do want to remind you that tonight is our first night that we are, uh, live on the county's YouTube channel. And, you know, in an effort to try to be more transparent and give our citizens an opportunity to watch, participate, or at least watch our proceedings here at our monthly meetings. This will be our first night, so, um, grateful for our IT department and others who had a part in getting us ready for that. Also, just want to gently remind you, if you would, when you do speak, you can speak directly to, or at least towards your microphone. That way you can pick up the best for folks that are not here. Now, I ask Ms. Bass to give yourself safety.
To provide for the safety of those attending this meeting, please listen to the following instructions in case of an emergency. First, please take a moment to note where your exits are. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, please exit this room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two doors to your right, and then proceed to the nearest stairwell, directions to which are indicated by the exit signs. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross Granville Street, which is the street that runs beside our building, to our parking lot to be safely away from the building. Our staff will help provide additional direction and assistance. In the case of a tornado warning, we ask that you exit this room into the hallway, where we will all remain until it is safe to exit. And in the event of an active shooter in the building, if there is an accessible escape path, please run and try to evacuate the premises. If you can't evacuate, find a place to hide where you are less likely to be found and lock any doors that you can. And as a last resort, and only if your life is in imminent danger, please fight. Our staff will provide additional assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm proud of that. Eternal God, our Father, we give thanks for another day, another time to give thanks to you for your loving kindness and your tender mercy. We ask you to bless our minds and our hearts. We make things harder things to make our county a better place than we should live. And as we decide, may it be done to help our constituents through Christ our Lord, we do pray. Uh, you have in your agenda packages, uh, the minutes about July twenty eighth and July third. I'll meet. I just get the, at least the direction of the document, if there are questions. All in favor, that'd be the my vote, aye.
Aye.
Or opposed. At this time, I'd like to call a public hand to order receive citizen input and a possible application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce. Well, the C D B G note, we're about to read out it. Public hand is called to order. Mr. Pierce, would you please read the public notice?
Yes, sir. On August seventh, twenty twenty-three, at seven fourteen a.m., Johnson Health Administration, if the county minister of building, if the county board commissioner will conduct a public hearing to receive comment on the housing needs, community needs, economic development needs, and other community development needs of the county. Any eligible to leave month to grant the national budget of low, moderate income for removal of slum or black, the public should encourage to provide comments. Any comment on specific low, moderate income, owner occupied houses, still certain or other potential activities listed on may be submitted by contacting the Tina Brazel by phone at two five two six four one seven eight oh eight, or by email at patinabrazel@h10ca.com. Housing needs will be referred to an intake special. H10 County will respond to all written comments within two towns a day. H10 County encourages comments that will make different efforts to involve shoulders and utilize businesses and section three individuals and businesses in execution of programs. Purchasing disabilities or who are otherwise need assistance should contact the public list below at least one day in advance of the year. Accommodation will be made for all the requested assistance for participating in the public hearing. This information is available in Spanish or any other language under request. Please contact the public list below if you accommodate this request. The Tina Brazel plans to address that.
Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the Rural Economic Division of the North Carolina Department of Commerce will announce the availability of community development block grant, neighborhood revitalization funds for activities within the county later this fall. The program is centered around renovation and replacement of substandard housing for low to moderate income families. And most of the funding must be used for low to moderate income owner occupied housing. The program funds can be used for the following. To address housing and other public utility, street and drainage conditions within a neighborhood, on a scattered site basis, or for emergency housing repairs. Construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, or installation of public facilities in support of housing, or improvement or removal of architectural barriers to promote energy efficiency. Senior and community, neighborhood, recreational center, parks, playgrounds, shelters for persons having special needs such as shelters for the homeless, convalescent homes, hospitals, nursing homes, battered spouse, shelters, halfway houses for runaway children, drug offenders or parolees, group homes for mentally challenged and disabled, and temporary housing. Water sewer connections for low to moderate, moderate income persons to lines not constructed with C D B G fund. And lastly, emergency housing repairs. The maximum grant request is yet to be determined. The program does not require a local match. However, some level of local funding may help the application score higher. We must conduct two public hearings prior to the submission of an application. Tonight's hearing is the first, and the purpose is to receive public comment about possible application activities. During the second, we will explain to the public the contents of the proposed application after approval by board commissioners. Excuse me, after we receive citizens' input, I recommend that you call for a second public hearing to be held at your September fifth forum.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, like, call public comments. If there's anybody here would like to come forward and speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Is there anybody here to speak? This is not public comments now.
Okay, this is a different public topic, okay.
We will, we will get to public comments, sir. It's, I hear speak, it's come forward, it's man.
I have a process question. Did I understand you to say that we're gonna hear the content? We're gonna ask questions first and get the content later? What did you say? How, what is the order of the information?
So, tonight is just to get input from our citizens. We will have a second public hearing next month.
I'm asking about what you just spoke. How are we proceeding at this meeting at this time? Did you say that we're gonna get the questions first and then the content? That's, I'm just asking for order of information.
We, we normally, we normally don't ask questions. We, we seek public input and take your information.
Certainly, but you're getting ready to provide information to us about the grant. Is that not correct?
I just did, that's what I just.
Is that all that you're gonna provide to us tonight? Oh, nothing, okay, thank you.
Is anybody else here to speak? Hearing none. The recommendation is to call for a public hearing on September, uh, the fifth.
Yes, sir.
Do I, do I have a motion for?
Say.
Questions? Somebody vote in time, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is, uh, the second public hearing is called for September fifth. Schedule appointments, Mr. Sir.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have Ms. Teresa Lewis, our tax admin administrator, who is here to present the annual tax settlement. We conclude for your consideration as a resolution to approve the annual tax settlement.
It's most of our resolution charging and authorizing her to collect remaining taxes unpaid from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-two, and the tax was levied in twenty twenty-three.
Good evening. Um, you have a copy of your annual settlement required by state statute in your agenda package. As you can see, the collection rate for the annual taxes went down from ninety-five point thirty-seven percent for F Y twenty twenty-one to twenty-two to ninety-five point thirty-four percent for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three. A slight decrease of point oh three percent. I'd also like to report that the motor vehicle tax collection rate for F Y twenty-two and twenty-three is ninety-nine point seventy-seven percent collection. A slight increase of point one three percent from the past fiscal year, which this increase in motor vehicle collections and a minimal change in the annual collections of overall ended, collection rate ended with a combined rate of ninety-five point ninety-one percent, which is the same rate as the previous fiscal year, twenty-one, twenty-two. The past two years has presented its challenges, one of which is having all new staff within the collections department. They've worked very hard over the past year learning collection procedures as well as North Carolina general statutes. The staffing challenges has only allowed us to maintain our minimum needs for collecting the monies received, not allowing us time to concentrate on enforcement as much as we would like to have. With that being said, I'm very pleased with what the deputy tax collector, Ms. Lisa Skinner, has accomplished this year along with Mr. Peters and his staff. They have, um, helped as well. Um, as well as thanking Mr. Evans and each of you for your continued support in our efforts to increase the collection percentages by allowing us to hire a delinquent tax specialist this fiscal year. Their role is sole responsibility will be concentrating on enforcement of delinquent taxes within our office. And our continued goal is to reach the state average of ninety-eight point eleven percent within the two years of hiring this additional staff person. I'd like to share a few statistics of enforcement that are done within the collections office. I know everybody always hears about what happens, um, and how we're bad, but, um, this is what we have to do. Uh, we have actively sixty-two payment plans. Um, we received fifteen new volumes of bankruptcies this year, totaling forty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents, which is untouchable. Um, the state debt, that's our program, we utilized them with, um, a total of a new hundred and fifty-two debts, which we collected eleven thousand, three hundred and three dollars this year with using that. We did thirteen bank garnishments this year, collecting twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. We did a total of thirteen hundred and forty-two wage garnishments this year, collecting two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. We also garnished what we call S sheets, which is your unclaimed monies. Uh, with sixty-two claims with that, we collected fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We were able to increase our sheriff executions this year and serve ninety-four taxpayers and collected a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. I'd also like to she, collect, um, thank the sheriff's office for that assistance and that, we appreciate your help. Um, and we did seventy-six additional parcels sent to the attorney's office for foreclosure. We sold twenty-six properties, which I'm glad to report that the county did not purchase any of those. Um, and out of those twenty-six sales, we collected a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Um, total foreclosure collected through the year was five hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That did include an additional rush at the end of the year trying to collect, um, additional monies, which was a hundred and forty-five correspondence sent out with an additional hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars that we collected with that. Um, as you can tell, we're very, very busy within our office, and we do utilize everything that the general statutes allows us to do to collect those taxes that are outstanding. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? I'll just go. If not. We take our time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So, the first action will be to approve the, uh, the first resolution, uh, which.
That's for the second.
Yes, sir.
Is there motion to approve tax collect settlement as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-three? Questions? All in favor, that'd be no matter what time, aye? All opposed? Hearing none, this is approved. The nation is charging tax collector collecting taxes for the year two thousand thirteen through two thousand twenty-three, is that correct? For that, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Is there motion?
Motion.
Questions? Questions? All in favor, that'd be no matter what time, aye? All opposed? Well, thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you.
Um, we have, uh, some scheduled guests on, uh, on your agenda tonight. Uh, first, we'd like to welcome to the podium, uh, Mr. Peyton Kaiser. He's the four-H delegate to attend the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Hall Conference, and I believe Ms. Tandy Heath is here as well, to make the form of introduction.
Yes, yes, good evening, everybody. I am honored to introduce you to Peyton Kaiser. He is one of our four-Hers. He's gonna be our representative to attend the commissioners' conference later this month. Um, but with that, I'll have to do a, a little marketing advertisement for Peyton. He was just, um, put in, or he was inducted into the honor club, which is the highest honoring four-H member convenience. So, he was just inducted into that, what, two weeks ago? Week and a half ago? Um, but anyway, so he's one of our, um, favorite four-Hers. He's, um, has done a little bit of everything in four-H, and now he's getting ready to go find out a little bit about government. So, we would like to get a picture if that's okay.
You, you'd like to come and show me? You'd like, you'd like to say anything?
(laughing). Oh, yeah.
Hold it there.
Too much light, yeah. Yeah, send them a ring. I might have to go.
Sorry.
No, I, no, you're fine. I think I can just get in. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Yeah. All right, I think I got everybody here. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Be prepared to talk a little bit more when he gets to the comments. Yeah, Mr. Webb is on the schedule, but we do expect him to be running late for another meeting, so if it's okay, we'll push him down the agenda and, and call him up when he gets to the comments.
At this time, now, now let's, your, your public petition is on. If anybody here would like to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the public record. Now, I see you sound like, if you want to come up and get some additional.
Well, don't let her go. She's standing.
Come on.
Keep going, you're okay.
Come on, come on. Some, come on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kathy Williams, two two eight, Rockland, Rockland, Tarver. I think you all know me by now. For all you guys some pictures, and I'm gonna tell you what the form in just a second. So, Edgecombe County's new vision statement is, Edgecombe County is a historic place that values its citizens and natural resources and creates opportunities where people are proud to live, work, play, for generations to come. I disagree. I've lived in Edgecombe County my entire life, and I have never considered leaving Edgecombe County as much as I have in the last few months. Actually, actively looking for housing outside of Edgecombe County, which I never thought I would do. Yeah, I'm tired of paying outrageous taxes when I see nothing for it. The sheriff's office had to beg for vehicles. We've been begging for a shelter front for how many years? You know, we got duplicate facilities in Tarver and Rocky Mountain, even though Tarver's the county seat, and there's gonna be a, a grand reopening of the health department in Rocky Mountain. I thought part of buying the big building down here and, you know, the two buildings that are out there by the shelter, they're just sitting there. You know, they're just, it's a waste of money. And, and again, like I said, I started asking for a new shelter many years ago, and I know it's been talked about, but here we are, still waiting. You know, I, I don't think that anybody understands the number of dogs, puppies, cats, and kittens that are dying, that, that have done nothing wrong. They have no reason to, to die. Um, and I don't know that anybody in the room understands what compassionate fatigue is. I think I've told you guys before, the animal euthanasia is that killing an animal humanely, most commonly with injectable drugs. So, what you think about the shelter attendant we have? This year alone, three hundred and thirty dogs and cats have been euthanized at the shelter. That is a forty-six percent euthanasia rate. We had it down to less than twenty percent, and we are back up to forty-six percent, and it's only August. You know, I, and I don't think anybody can, can understand what it feels like if they've not been there. I don't have to euthanize thinking, I couldn't do it. Um, I told y'all before that I own stocking McDonald's, as many chicken nuggets as I've bought, and I've bought more recently, because I know that those dogs are gonna die. Seventy-two hours is state law, you gotta hold them seventy-two hours. Well, a lot of times if we have a few extra days, we can work with an animal that comes in that's terrified. But when you don't have any room and the calls don't stop, you don't have time to work with the dogs. They gotta die, and that's not fair to those animals. And I don't know how to fix it. The citizens of county, yes, they absolutely need to be more responsible. Um, you know, we started offering the state's pay neuter program. Um, and by the way, Williamson has not received a check, so we need to, um, get on that if we can. We owe them a little over fourteen hundred dollars. Um, and they were, Williamson Veterinary Hospital was gracious enough to do that program for us, and because neither vet in Tarver will participate. And so, we've done some, we want to advertise it more, but until we get it, make sure everything's straight so the veterinarian's office can be paid, that's kind of a catch twenty-two for us. And I've, I've actually offered, matter of fact, I offered a lady today that can't go to Williamson. I'm gonna take her dog to Williamson for her and let it get fixed, and I'm gonna go back the next day and pick it up, just because it's the right thing to do. And these pictures, so back in May, the shelter closed for two weeks. They have the floor sealed and the walls painted. And I'm not sure who was hired to do that job. I showed Mr. Matthews some pictures, um, last Monday, but they were on my phone. I didn't have them printed, but I printed them for y'all, and there's two sets. Um, Stan has been talking to the company that did the works, but it's apparently supposed to be a fifteen-year warranty. I don't know if they use the wrong paint. I don't know what they give, but if you go to the town shelter and look when theirs was sealed, they've not had a single problem. And there's a picture of a puppy in here, and the reason the picture of the puppy's in here is because I want y'all to see that a twenty-five pound puppy ripped the ceiling off the side of the kennel. Now, if that ceiling had been done correctly, a twenty-five pound puppy wouldn't have been able to tear it up. The paint's coming off the walls already, and it's only been since May. And if that's the kind of work that company does, then it was a waste of money. I'm sorry, but it was. Um, like I said, we gotta do better. I, I don't know how to fix it. Um, but I do know that as a taxpayer, I've been severely, severely disappointed. Um, I've seen some of the trucks the sheriff's office had to get because they couldn't get SUVs or can't get cars, and anybody that's looking for a new vehicle knows they're hard to come by now, no matter what you're trying to get. I mean, I think the PD ran into trouble trying to get SUVs. And for some of the places they go in the county, they absolutely need the trucks and SUVs, so that might cost a little bit more. But then you think about the cars, they had the, the terminals in the cars, the laptops in cars, but then the things in there may not fit into the trucks, but they got to with that. So, I, I don't, I don't know what the solution is, but I'm asking for help. I know you committed to a shelter, but at this point, I mean, the land hasn't even been touched. And that was on the, that was in the county's plan two years ago, I think, and the land is still sitting there. I mean, that timber could pay for part of the building. I, I just don't know what the solution is, but I had to let y'all know how many animals were dying, just because there's no room. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Can you tell me, uh, what's the reason why the local veteran, veterinarian, or not participate?
We didn't get an answer. We, we sent the email out multiple times, because we have to provide to the state proof that we asked. Um, we sent the email to both veterinarians offices twice, because I asked, we have to submit something to the statement writing, um, and we got zero response. The first time we called, they said they didn't get the email, so we sent it again, and Amy sent it from her county email, so we have proof both times that it was sent, and we got no response.
There's nobody in the person?
Not that I'm aware of. I know the reimbursement is low, um.
I was wondering if that part of the problem.
So, the reimbursement for this year for a, a dog stay is, I think it's around two hundred dollars or a little more, and if you walk in off the street as a private citizen, um, I think they charge around five hundred dollars. But yet, there's other vets, like the one in Williamson, that will do it for what the state reimburses. To neuter a cat, it's like, I think the reimbursement's right at a hundred dollars, and that's a surgery that takes five minutes. So, I, I don't know if it's because they don't think they'll get any, I don't, I don't think they won't gain patients from the program, if that's all they'll do and they'll never see them again, but, um, we're seeing that there are a lot of people that want their animals fixed and they just can't afford it. And this program has been a, a godsend to a lot of people. We've helped a lot of senior citizens, um, because we can do it on income too. Medicaid, food stamps, or, um, the poverty limit, sorry.
Is anybody else? Yes, ma'am, please come forward, take your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Tracy Phillips. I reside at eleven zero nine U.S. Highway three oh one, Whittakers, North Carolina, two seven eight nine one. Our county's board's conduct has been nothing short of a disappointment with abdication, desertion, and malfeasance leading to a dereliction of the, of their duty as responsible stewards of our resources. This outrageous and unacceptable performance is now public knowledge, apparent to all except those who turn a blind eye to the truth or recklessly ignore the consequences of their actions. Such behavior cannot go unpunished. Those who act in this manner must face the consequences. The state auditor's recent report revealed clear red flags about the board and the county manager's performance. Gross mismanagement and a failure to lead by example have eroded the trust of those who rely on the county manager's guidance. This hypocrisy undermines the very essence of leadership that should be earned through accountability and transparency. Moreover, there has been a failure in fiduciary duty to provide adequate oversight and accountability of the county's resources. Repeated failure to reconcile bank accounts, late penalties, and inaccurate payrolls have resulted in the wastage of valuable resources that should be utilized for the betterment of the citizens in this county. The lack of due diligence from both the board and the county manager is an embarrassment. Matters that are material to accountability have been overlooked, and a lack of monitoring or reporting have I been turned off?
We, we hear you.
Has led to a delegation of financial management responsibilities without any sense of responsibility. Perhaps most concerning of all is the overall failure to communicate effectively with the citizens of this county. Essential information has not been shared transparently, leading to a lack of trust and high rates of staff turnover. Toxic leadership, abuse of authority, and a disregard for the community's voices have created an atmosphere of mistrust and dissatisfaction. The consequences of this lack of accountability are evident. Our chief administrator seems disconnected from the realities at hand, displaying poor judgment and ineffective oversight of labor and resources. We cannot afford to have a leader incapable of meeting the challenges that lie ahead. In light of these alarming circumstances, I earnestly call upon the board to do the honorable thing and demand the immediate resignation of the county manager. Our county deserves better, and we stand at a pivotal crossroads, a moment that will determine the future and fate of Edgewood County. The choice is clear. We can either continue with the leadership that has left us at the bottom in health, housing, and education, or we can embrace a new path of accountability, transparency, and good governance, something that propels our county forward. We demand the change, we deserve it, and we're holding you responsible for your neglectful actions, and you need to be held accountable. We deserve, as the citizens of this county, nothing less. Thank you.
Is anybody else to speak?
I have, uh, my name is Roger Suvain, and I'm at eleven zero nine, U.S. Highway three oh one, Whittakers, North Carolina, same address. I noticed the other day in reviewing your, your budget, I don't know if you know that we have a debt service of, for a three-million-dollar principal, and that we have budgeted for the interest on it, which seems to be nineteen percent interest a year. I don't know if, if y'all are aware that it's such a high interest rate on that particular amount of money. You know, it's either the bankers are making really a good deal or somebody else. Is that a way of we are portioning money at a different time for other, other reasons? The other thing is, uh, for the, for the, the principal in the school, the six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, and the interest on that is eleven percent. Eleven percent. So we're paying eleven percent on interest on one loan and nineteen percent interest on the other. You know, those are two things. The other day I attended the good meeting that, uh, your manager put together last Monday. And he mentioned the fact that you were hiring a new person to be responsible for coordinating, uh, unemployment to employers in the county. I think the amount was like thirteen hundred unemployed and about sixteen hundred jobs. I did a little research, and I found out that you guys already have people doing that. You already have an office dedicated to that in this county. And it has four professionals in it. It's over at the Edgewood County Community College. I believe Ms. Harris works in there. And they do that. As a matter of fact, when I spoke to the head of the department, he was flabbergasted. He didn't understand why in the world did we need to hire somebody else to do his job? Now, he can adjust the focus to resolve some of the issues that the county wants to address. But again, this is a matter of wasted money, uh, hiring somebody else, one person, when you have four people and a whole staff of experienced professionals to be able to do so. I wish you guys really take that into consideration and make necessary adjustments. That's it.
Anybody else to speak?
John Walker, thirteen oh three, North Main, editor of March Harbor Today Digital Newspaper. I'd like to just raise the question, uh, about leasing versus borrowing money on vehicles again. Uh, conversation came up prior to the budget. Uh, it came up before the budget was voted on. Uh, we still haven't gotten anything. Uh, but one of the explanations was the fact that one, one company was talked to rather than Enterprise because Enterprise wanted the entire county's business and not just the Sheriff's Office. What's wrong with that? I've sat in meetings before where we've talked about trying to find mechanics to work on the vehicles, having trouble finding diesel mechanics. Uh, we talked about it a lot back over here where we could build a shop. Why not go with the company that would take your vehicles and have a management program for all of the vehicles in the county? That takes it off of the department head and let, allows them to do the job that they're supposed to do. Uh, Ms. Harris asked that question before, that she didn't, didn't understand that we didn't have a, a vehicle maintenance plan. You know, that's, that's prudent spending of taxpayer money. You know, and, and that's the, that's the one thing, it's all taxpayer money. You know, uh, I don't know what the interest rate is, uh, at Southern Bank, and I believe that's the one that we're using. Uh, but if we can get a better deal with Enterprise, if they want all of our vehicles and they want to do a veh- vehicle maintenance plan, and the Sheriff's Office has a vehicle that has a hundred and fifty thousand miles, we're gonna know that fifty thousand miles ago, they came and got that vehicle, and they got better, better set of wheels. You know, it makes no sense. You know, we've got to do a better job of spending our money. If my wife and I don't do it at home and we're on a fixed income, we're gonna be in trouble. Well, y'all are on a fixed income because we can only give you so much. You know, we're already at ninety-five cents. So thank you very much for allowing me to say that.
Good evening. From Rose Dance, one-two-seven, Millway Lane, Tarver, North Carolina. Melon address, P.O. Box thirteen ninety-one, Times, South Carolina. First, on the start of, uh, Mr. Turner, you need to talk into the mic. I use my old laptop that these I could bring this up here. People will see I posted, they couldn't hear you. I don't know how, but I posted that they, uh, y'all got y'all set up. Maybe they can go over there, maybe they can hear you. But I wanna echo what, uh, my committee member back here from the Animal Control Committee. I wanna echo all that she said about animal control. Um, being on a committee, um, and I don't know where we at now. We haven't had a couple of meetings, I guess, because of the summer or whatever. But I'd be glad when we get back on it and do something and move forward so we can do something about a new animal shelter. And then the last thing, y'all know I always talk about my Edgewood County Sheriff's Office. Uh, it's embarrassing to me, um, video the, uh, Gospel Singer, Edgewood Community College on Saturday evening, and to look out in the parking lot and see this old Explorer, about old as me, and I'm sixty. It's embarrassing to me. Our county got these old vehicles. We need some new vehicles. I don't get it. I know everybody else has spoken on it, I hate to sound redundant, but it is what it is. I hope I see some new vehicles next year because people need, the, the officers need to be able to make it on a call, to the call, and they need to make it back home. I think some of them don't make it. Might make it their car breakdown, vehicle breakdown. In other words, let's get some new vehicles. Thank you.
Is anybody else?
Just a quick comment. Uh, the attachments available to the public?
What's that now?
The attachment to this document you can request, we can give you a full pack of it. Thank you, please.
Is anybody else to speak? Any comments from the board? Well, I'm gonna just make one comment. I don't usually do it at, from the petitions, but, you know, we have a separate member board, and it takes four members of the board to approve within the thing that comes out of the budget. And some of the projects that you're talking about have been, we've been working on, uh, some, some other time. And we can only spend, as I said, we gotta fix that code, you know, it's been what we've got. And it has to be spread around. And we make those decisions on where we're gonna spread it. And sometimes we can't do, every department head that comes here wants more money. And we have to make decisions on how we're gonna fund them. And that's what we think we do. There was one comment about, I had to come in about this, about our, our manager. He manages how many employees we got?
About five.
And while oversight is his responsibility, along with that of department heads, a lot of things you can't fix, things that don't get to you. But I've been around Edgewood government for probably twenty-four years. And I certainly give this manager full confidence, full confidence in terms of, uh, uh, his ability to do his job. And, and, and I'm not asking the board to comment, but, uh, if I've got anything to, he will stay here as long as I stay. If I can help it, he will be here. So I want to respond to that, okay? And we would like to see, you know, we do valuable citizen comments. And if we get them more often, whether they're against government or supportive, but we do a lot of things that we like to hear that we do well. And sometimes we are privileged, we, the board, we are privileged to, to have an agenda package that will contain more facts than you as citizens get. And those are the things that we deal with, we deal with. We're working on that shelter and field close. We're working on, can't, no, no department would get everything they want. And we will not do it on the schedules, some we have to do a fix, but the finance that we have, we could continue to do it. So a lot of you might not be satisfied, but we would dare do things according to the budget that we have. Any comments to the board? Karen Nunn, next on the agenda. You got comments?
Why don't we cut, cut us off before we can come?
When I ask you what you did, I asked you who I commented. I never cut the board off. Do I, Mr. Nunn? Mr. Nunn, do I allow her to speak? Do I allow everybody to speak? But do I allow the boards? Thank you.
I understand, um, our citizens' feelings. Um, as county commissioners, believe me, I share those feelings. Um, during twenty and twenty-one, we were in a pandemic. A lot of people were not working full-time inside the building, which allowed a lot of things to not happen as they should have happened. Um, our finance department has had to be completely revamped. We found out during that time, we had people who were inexperienced, unable to do the job at hand. So believe me, we took, uh, precautions, and twenty twenty-one is gone. Now we have to start on where we are now. That department does not look like it used to look. We've made sure that we've hired people with experience. We've made sure that we put money in the budget so that we can get the best because we understand finance is, is at the top priority of any county because we've gotta make sure that everything that we're supposed to take care of is taken care of. Now, whether you know it or not, county commissioners, we pay taxes just like you did. So of course, we got upset when we saw the report. But we also had the opportunity to look at that report and see that the auditor did not have some things quite right. Now, you can't believe everything you read. I worked in the newspaper business for fifteen years. So you can't believe everything you read. You gotta remember who's doing the report. You gotta remember, before you take the blank out of my eye, you need to take it out of your own. So believe me, this board has come down and made sure that there are processes in place so that what has happened does not happen again. Believe me, we're not the kind to close our eyes to anything, even when it comes to our manager. Believe me, he's been told, he's been shown. But remember, he's a man just like the rest of us. And in twenty twenty-one, he had his hands full just like everybody else. And right now, we believe that we're in a good place. Uh, the gentleman mentioned about the people at Edgewood Community College. Dr. McLeod, who's the president of the college, is working with our manager on that specific job to include it with what he has. Because what he has is dealing with education and work. We've gotta remember, everybody's not going to Edgewood Community College. Everybody's not going to college, period. So we're trying to get people to work who wanna work with their hands, their jobs out there. People that can work with their minds, their jobs out there. So I just wanted you to know that after twenty-two years of serving this county, yes, I was disappointed. Yes, I was one of the first ones to let him know I was not satisfied. But you gotta remember, we're all hearing. The states have been made, but we have put things in place to make sure that we're at the best that we can be for right now in twenty-three, twenty-four, moving forward.
Karen Nunn, I see, um, I believe Mr. Webb came in. Regional Director of the Office of Commerce, Don Davis, please come forward.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, it is an honor to be here, Mr. Chairman, to the Board of Commissioners, County Administration, uh, and to the citizens of Edgewood County. It is an honor, uh, to be standing before you, uh, this evening. I will be brief. Um, do you know if you were able to get the?
Yes, Jason, if you will, you can pull up the presentation for Mr. Webb.
Uh, why they pull that up? Uh, my name is David Webb. I'm the Regional Director for Congressmen, Don Davis. Uh, the, of, the congressional district covers nineteen counties, and Edgewood is a part of that congressional district. Uh, and I represent, uh, Edgewood County as the Regional Director and at your point of contact, if there's anything that our office can do, uh, to be of service. Um, I have a, a little presentation here, so you have visual aid, but I will definitely be talking on top of it. Um, what I wanted to be able to do here this evening, I think it's clicking off of mine and going to somebody else's when I hit the button.
Jason, if you'll pull up the other presentation, this is Antoine's presentation we're looking at.
What's the right, is it the side bundle? Okay, uh, yes, here we go. All right, so some of the things that our office provides, what I'm gonna do is tell you a little bit about what our office provides. Thank you, sir. A little bit about what our office provides as well as some of the things that we've done, uh, over the last six months that Congressman Davis has been in office. Uh, some of the work that we do, one of the most important pieces is congressional casework. Uh, as the office, we can serve as a liaison between the constituents, uh, and a federal agency. So if you have an issue or a case or a situation that has come up, uh, we can act, uh, as that liaison to reach out, to get an inquiry, to get an update. Uh, obviously, we can't change the outcome, but we can get you an answer and try to see through some of the confusion. They are required to respond. Uh, I do like to be upfront. Sometimes it takes sixty to ninety days to get a response, and sometimes it takes one to two weeks. Uh, but we will let you know what that average response time, uh, is when you reach out. Uh, some of the successful casework that we've had, we've received, uh, over thirty thousand dollars, uh, for a surviving son of a veteran. Uh, we've gotten somebody their passport in way less than two weeks, um, so that they can make it to their trip. They were very grateful. Uh, so that's just a little bit of some of the things that we've done. In terms of constituent outreach, that is where the regional directors come into play. And we're in the community often. We're showing up at your events, at your gatherings, uh, at your meetings. If there's any way that we can be of service, we want to make sure we're present, which helps us know, let us know where we can show up and how we can serve better. Uh, so that we can continue to do that outreach in the community each day. In terms of educational opportunities for the youth, uh, we have three main ways that we do that. And then through the congressional art competition. So if, uh, there's a young person that is great in art, uh, wants to submit their artwork, we have a banquet for them. Uh, and then that will happen towards the end of the school year and the beginning of the school year. We have a congressional app challenge where they can create their own app, uh, to really get involved and engaged, uh, in coding, uh, which is really important to get that down here in the East. Uh, and additionally, we can do recommendations, uh, for congressional, uh, uh, mil, for military academies. We can do recommendations, uh, for you to do that as well. Uh, and commendations and greetings, if there's any type of letter, if there's a retirement, there is an award, if somebody has done something wonderful, we can give you a letter from the office of Congressman Don Davis. Let us know how we can do that, and that goes for the county as well. Uh, we'd love to be, you know, assist you all in honoring the folks that are doing great work every day for the East. Uh, flag requests, uh, we can do a direct flag request. So if you would like a flag flown over the Capitol with a personalized letter to go along with it directed to that individual, uh, or the nonprofit organizations, we can do that as well. And then federal grant assistance, uh, the way that works is if the county is applying for grants, if there is a nonprofit applying for grants, we can do a letter of support uh, from the congressman's office on behalf. So please let us know so that we can be helpful in getting the money down here to the East and Edgecombe County particularly. Uh, and then constituent representation in Congress. Obviously, the number one job of the legislator is to legislate, uh, and to do legislation. So the congressman, uh, is really big in that, make sure that he hears your concerns and showing up. Uh, and we show up in numerous different ways, show up in town halls, uh, that are general public. We show up with listening sessions. We show up with roundtables, and they can be focused on specific issues that are important to the East, right? So we've done agricultural listening sessions, and the farm bill is up this year, so to hear exactly what folks need right here, right? Instead of just figuring out, DC want to listen to you all. Uh, so we want you to participate in those ways. We've done tours, uh, to different factories, industries, small business, meeting with different local officials. Um, and then we do newsletters and texts and calls, make sure plenty of people, uh, get those. Um, and then virtual seminars, such as the one we did for community project funding to give the towns and counties information on how to apply for funds from the federal level. Um, in addition, I'll give you a little bit of legislative updates some people are most, uh, interested in. Uh, the congressman is one of the most bipartisan members, uh, in Congress with eighty-five percent bipartisanship rating. Um, and that has allowed him as a freshman member, uh, to be a co-sponsor of over a hundred and fifty pieces of legislation. Um, he serves as a vice ranking member on not only the House Agriculture Committee, which we know is critical to the East, but as well on, uh, the Armed Services, uh, Committee as well. Uh, so if there's anything that you have an issue with in those regards, please don't hesitate to reach out. We certainly wanted to hear your feedback and pick that back, uh, to Washington. Okay, perfect. So in terms of appropriations, that's what everybody wants to know about where the money is. Uh, uh, the community project funding, for those that do not know, is how the federal government, uh, works to get money down to the local towns and counties. Uh, and in terms of that, uh, I'm gonna be really direct and intentional about, about that response. Uh, Congress has set the stage, uh, for a chaotic September, uh, with the House and Senate on a collision course over appropriations and the risk of a partial government shutdown already being assessed. Uh, out of the twelve annual appropriation bills that Congress has to pass every year, the House has only passed one of those bills, that's military, construction, and VA funding. Uh, because those twelve bills have yet to pass and members are in the district right now until mid-September on a recess. Um, uh, it is, there's likely not going to be enough time that the government will be able to fund those bills, uh, and have them all negotiated by the end of the fiscal year, which is September thirtieth. Uh, so that means that we will likely have to consider, uh, continuing resolution, which means the continuation of the current funding levels, not approving next year's, uh, fiscal budget, which contains those community project funding, uh, requests. With all that being said, the projects are in their respective committee reports accompanying their appropriation bills, uh, but we still cannot guarantee that these bills, uh, will be passed. Uh, but we do hope we'll be finding a way for that funding for the East. Uh, full circle, just so you know about it, uh, and this is where I'll end. Uh, Congressman Don Davis loves to highlight what is going on in Eastern North Carolina. There are so many good things, there's people that are doing great things, there's organizations that are doing great things, the county is doing great things. But we got to highlight that, honor that. People need to know that the East, uh, is, is on the map, right? So the congressman is going to the floor, uh, more than any other member, and that is a fact, he won the competition for that, uh, to tell stories about the East and to tell the stories of the citizens. We see Mr. Joe Bello here, uh, and actually, that is a hundred and two-year-old veteran, uh, that was shot down twice, uh, as, as a, as a bomber pilot, uh, but lives to tell that story. So Congressman Don Davis told that story on the floor and I presented it in that congressional record. But we want to do more of that, right? We want to tell that story because it needs to be highlighted. It's been too far behind. Uh, so please let us know. If there's anything like that, the congressman needs to come and sit down and then talk about that or highlight that on the floor. Uh, thank you all so very much for your time. I appreciate all of that time, uh, that I took up from this important meeting. Uh, and then if there's any way that we can be of service, please reach out on the website. Wendy, if you have my number, I'm happy to give it to you at the end of the meeting today. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I just want to know, is one of those requests, um, someone else get an animal shelter?
Well, I, I don't know that we received a community project.
We're approaching that through state budget.
Yes. So the way, I don't think we received one for the last fiscal year or the upcoming one, but in February, it'll be an opportunity for you all to apply again if, if that is something you so wish.
I just know Congress has these special projects that all of a sudden they find they can do in different communities. Or Edgecombe County's a community that he can do a really good one, um, animal shelter.
Absolutely.
We would have folks to give testimonies to meet that.
Oh, no, I, I've heard. I've heard the importance of the animal shelter. Yes, ma'am. And I would definitely urge the, the county to submit a project request for that next year.
Any other comments or questions from the board? If not, ladies and gentlemen, if anybody from the public would like to ask a square question. If not, you, thank you as well. Don't keep it over too long, they'll find something to ask.
I was thinking I got out too easy. Thank you so much.
I would make a comment. The other day, I needed to find some information about the Democratic people in the county. And I called, uh, Congressman's office, and I think you're the one that gave me the information.
That's the man you can call, right? Uh, moving on to other business. Go ahead, listen.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So the first item, um, we're asking you to consider ratifying a previous board action for additional grant funds for water in sewer District Six. Uh, I'll give you some background information on that and we'll request that you convene as the governing board of water in sewer District Six. Um, as you know, we received notice of additional grant funding available from USDA Rural Development for our infrastructure project in water and sewer District Six in the amount of two million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Since USDA had to get those funds obligated before August fourth, you called a special meeting for August second at two P M. However, because of some unexpected and urgent family and health emergencies and obligations, only three members of the board were present at two P M for the special meeting. After consulting with USDA, it was clear that to avoid losing two million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand USDA grant funds, it was necessary for the board to immediately consider the grant amendment without a delay that would be, uh, caused by calling for a later special meeting. Therefore, the board called an emergency meeting for August second at four P M to approve the grant amendment. The emergency meeting was held on Tuesday, August second at four P M. A quorum was present, and the board properly considered and approved the grant amendment in time to secure the grant funding. Even though the meeting was properly called and a quorum was present, which unanimous, which, uh, unanimously, unanimously approved the action, I know it is important to you to be transparent with our citizens. Therefore, to show clear support for the acceptance of those grant funds in a regularly scheduled meeting of the board, I recommend that you convene as the governing board of water and sewer District Six and then ratify the board's previous action to approve Amendment Number Two to the letter of conditions for the USDA Rural Development Grant for Water and Sewer District Six, increasing the grant by the amount of two million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Is the motion this session, right, to convene this governor body of water and sewer District Six? Okay, questions? All in favor, let me know by the vote sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're now sitting as governor body of water and sewer District Number Six. And the motion, please read the motion again, I said.
Uh, the motion is to, um, to ratify the board's previous action to approve Amendment Number Two to the letter of conditions for the USDA Rural Development Grant for Water and Sewer District Six, increasing the grant by the amount of two million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Who makes that motion? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the vote sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here not as approved. Is the motion adjourned? Governor Body of Water, Sewer District Six, and re-convene as a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners? Okay, the motion, I said, questions? All in favor, let me know by the vote sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. We're now sitting as county commissioners again. All to the amendment, Mr. Sev.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, you have, uh, budget amendments present, excuse me, presented for your consideration. Those at the front of the, uh, budget amendment section are those that are required for your approval. I'll review those and give you some background, the rest for your information. I do have an additional budget amendment, budget amendment number six B that should be at your place. I want to ask if you would consider us, um, adding that budget amendment, um, budget amendment number one. Um, this is, uh, our workers, workers' compensation came in a little over twenty-two thousand dollars more than what we budgeted. So you're seeing that we're moving, um, we are, uh, adding additional funds to the budget to cover those additional costs. Budget amendment number two, uh, this is, uh, the board approved accepting a governor's prime commission highway safety grant for the sheriff's office. This will appropriate those funds in the, uh, in the appropriate lines. Um, as a note that, um, this pays, uh, partly salary-related costs for a position, um, half of which must come from the county, which is coming from existing salary budget in the sheriff's office. Budget amendment number three, this is a grant that is above the annual allocation that we receive for what's called PSAP funds. PSAP stands for Public Safety Answering Point, or it's our nine-one-one, uh, uh, calling center. Uh, these are additional grant funds we're receiving, so you're seeing we're budgeting, receiving and appropriating that in the appropriate lines. Budget amendment number four, this is to move funds to a newly created travel line in the, uh, in the, uh, sheriff's office. Uh, no additional appropriation of fund balance, just moving it from one line to another there. Budget amendment number five, these are, uh, additional funds received in the Health Department. We are asking you to consider approving this to appropriate that revenue and to the appropriate expenditure lines. Budget amendment number six, um, this is, um, uh, remaining funds to roll forward. These, this is part of ARPA funds that we receive. Uh, we use ARPA. And, and these ARPA funds enable us to budget a hundred thousand dollars in, uh, in the planning office to do our urgent home renovations program that is underway. So this twenty-four thousand dollars is the balance for last fiscal year to roll forward. Budget amendment six A. Uh, you may recall that last year, we received a little over two hundred and seventy thousand dollars from Medicaid cost settlement funds. Uh, what we have been doing for the last few years is using those funds to purchase vehicles, uh, and EMS. Um, with those funds, we did purchase one, uh, remount last year. Uh, but we were hoping to be able to purchase a second before the end of the fiscal year, but we were not able to identify one. We have identified one now, so we're asking that you, uh, roll those funds forward so that we'll be appropriating that from fund balance into capital outlay and emergency services. And the last one for your approval, which is one I'm asking if you, uh, if you will add for your consideration. Um, these are funds from the PSAP programs I mentioned before. These are part of the annual PSAP funds that we receive, funds that go unspent, go into a PSAP fund balance. So we are appropriating from that fund balance, one hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, uh, into that capital outlay line so that some, uh, uh, equipment can be purchased. Happy to answer any questions that you might have on those or any of the other budget, uh, amendments, but I recommend that you.
On six and six A, should they not have, um, the department's signature?
Six and six A. Um, yeah, sometimes we, those budget amendments are generated in the finance department. They were prepared in the finance department. So in that case, it doesn't have to have the, the department's. There, oh, there, I'm glad, yes. There was one of it, uh, I did notice one in here, I forgot which one it is, that did not have my signature. I, I do approve it. I'll make sure that I, um, it was on budget amendment number five. I'll make sure that I go back and sign the original document.
Uh, the motion will be approved, budget amendment one through?
Six B.
Yeah, with seven.
No, the budget amendment number seven is for your information, it's not required.
One is the most approved, budget amendment one through six B?
Yes, sir.
The motion? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the vote sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the budget amendment's all approved. Moving on.
Um, item number, uh, item C is regarding assistance policy for urgent repair program. Um, we have been awarded seventy-six thousand dollars by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency under the twenty-twenty-three cycle of the urgent repair program. The goal of the project is to assist at least five very low and low-income families with special needs on addressing housing conditions that pose imminent threats to their life and or safety, or to provide accessibility mod, modifications and other repairs necessary to prevent displacement. NCHFA requires that we adopt an assistance policy and procurement dispersment policy before a funding agreement is issued. Uh, included for your consideration are those policies I recommend that you approve both as presented.
Question?
Second.
Questions?
Do we already have, uh, a list of people?
Um, we have people that call all the time. We keep a list and then we let them know when we have new funds. But we also advertise.
Any other questions? How, how is it determined?
For like urgent repair program? So we, uh, we take, we take applications for a defined, a defined period of time, usually thirty, sometimes forty-five days. First, we have to determine that the household is eligible, and that is to have to show proof of ownership, they have to meet one of the el, other eligibility criteria. Then beyond that, it is ranked. We have a ranking system. For example, uh, if it is an, uh, elderly person, the household gets certain priority points. If it is a large household that is five or more people, gets priority points. Um, and then they're ranked and by those points and date of application. And then we simply go down as far as we can off that list. We, we normally have more people to apply than we have funds to, to assist.
Excuse me, I have one more.
Yes, ma'am. These, these programs are for owner occupied dwellers.
When you make that list for once, it didn't quite make the list, do they get rolled over the next time or will they have to reapply?
They often have to reapply. We have to, we have to take a separate application, but we let them know when we, when we're taking the application. That's a good question.
Any other questions? I get emotional. All in favor, let me know by the vote sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, this, next.
Uh, next is regarding job descriptions for, uh, newly created positions. As you are aware, FY twenty four budget includes funding for the following new positions. The career navigator at grade twenty two, parks and recreation director grade twenty three. And an in-house attorney for social services grade twenty five. The budget also includes adding back a delinquent tax specialist position, which was previously on our pay plan, that is added at grade twelve. I recommend that you approve the job descriptions as presented, as well as the revised pay plan that includes those positions at 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 the grades as stated.
Motion? Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes on the side aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That directly reflect, vote five, five one. Next.
Uh next is regarding sole sourcing for purchase of water meters. Presented for your consideration is a quote upgrade water meter reading system utilized by the utilities department. Along with purchasing new water meters and associate the pertinences to replace water meters within several districts. County, county's utilities department utilizes Neptune water meters to monitor water uses throughout district one through five. However, district six, which is in the town of Princeville, utilizes a Badger meter system that was inherited at the time the county. Took over ownership of from the town of Princeville system, which currently leaves the utility department operating two separate meter reading systems. Currently, the Badger reading system and water meters are in desperate need of replacement. Therefore, it's much easier to convert the entire Badger system to to the Neptune system. According to our financial policy under competitive bidding, when goods or services are only available from a single source. Those items can be purchased through sole sourcing, but must be approved by the board, the governing board prior to the purchase. So recommend that you approve the attached quote as presented.
I'm not sure.
How old are they?
Uh they should be getting somewhere in about fifteen years.
Any other questions? Motion? Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes on the side aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here none, this approved.
Um the next item is regarding a resolution to appropriate additional opioid settlement funds. Um as you are aware, counties are receiving additional funds from a second opioid settlement with five pharmacies referred to as the second wave. The distribution process mirrors the original settlement of reading counts. We have already received the first allocation of sixty four thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and sixty seven cents. Presented for your consideration is a resolution to update our appropriation from both settlements. The total amount includes the first two allocations from the first settlement wave, the amount received from the second wave. And the anticipated amount to be allocated later this fiscal year. I recommend that you approve the enclosed resolution as presented.
Question?
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Questions?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
Um I, I think that we need to work with our attorney and the association of county commissioners. Because it's my understanding that the manufacturers have started to default on those payments and are going to renegotiate these opioid payments. And we're allocating these funds um and expecting payment over sixteen years. And so I think that we need to make sure that we as a board are cognizant of that. And pertinent to the legislation and how that this process is going.
And should we, and should we get it for?
Correct, they've committed to sixteen years, but they just defaulted on their second payment of the billions of dollars.
I think the record has not sent anything out on that on the association.
It's, it's just hitting, just hitting the news about this and they think that it's a way to be negotiating this.
Any other question or comment? All in favor, let me know by the votes on the side aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here none, this approved. Edchcombe County ABC Board.
You have um item G, Mr. Chairman.
Consider his approval, let me correct, uh they are on solid square.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, um uh you have here tonight amendments to both our solid waste ordinance and the um. And the uh water and sewer utilities ordinance that was adopted on June the twenty eighth. Uh we have some additions and corrections to make, um make, I'm, I'm gonna ask Mr. Matthews, Mike Matthews, to come forward and he's gonna walk you through those changes to the ordinance.
Good evening, um so the first one you had for you is the solid waste ordinance, um it, this is amendment number one. Uh when we got to looking through our fee structure for the solid waste department, we noticed that uh. There was just a few corrections due to be made, I don't know if I had fat finger syndrome or whatever when I sent it in, so um. One of the changes is construction and demolition, uh we, we were supposed to have gone from fifty dollars per ton to fifty five. Also, um yard waste, was it forty four fifty, which should have been forty six dollars per ton? And also, we left out the scrap tire disposal fee. Um which was not in the original ordinance, but it needs to be in this one, at ninety dollars per ton.
Any question, Mr. Chairman? Not a sample.
Feet fit. Feet fit.
He fixed it, thank you, nobody at this time. Second, second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes on the side aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here none.
Nancy will tell you the differences with the uh water and sewer operations.
I was wondering that. It's, it's just, you said about the ninety dollar disposal fee for the tires, is that any bad start to the sewers?
Yes, it, so uh the way it works is uh everybody in Edchcombe County that does not live in uh a town, in a town of, um. Pine tops, stuff like that, where they pay a solid weas- a solid waste fee, they have the option of going in and and disposing of five tires per year. Uh which is just a simple homeowner. Uh when you get into businesses uh like a Blackwills, like a Bullwoods, or something like that, they pay a a tax, disposal tax. Uh they go to the state, we in turn, we reimburse that, um. Yes, it is, when you go to buy this set of tires, you pay about that tax. Yeah, thi- this, the ninety dollars per ton is when you get an outsider, a farmer, or somebody that is who's collected a bunch of tires. They can come in, dispose of it at ninety dollars a ton. So we have, we just have to have a set fee.
Since we all been up, any other comments? Any other questions? Are you, you gotta answer them. All in favor of the second?
We've already passed the first one, he's gonna review the second.
The second one is the water and sewer operations, um this is one hundred percent on me as well, so uh when I sent in the fees. The only thing that needs to be corrected is the residential and commercial fees. They should have, the first five thousand gallons is seven dollars per thousand, that is correct. But from there forward, it should have been seven fifty and eight twenty five. Um and we had them set at seven seventy five and eight twenty five, so it's just that one correction, the movement to seven fifty per thousand and eight dollars per thousand.
Seven fifteen, eight?
Right, that's, that's what it should be.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the one we adopted was seven seventy five and eight twenty five, it went up by seventy five cent when it should have been, it should have been fifty. That's the only correction on that one.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir, you need a se- separate motion.
Is there a motion to approve?
Uh the utilities uh water and sewer operations order.
Water and sewer operations. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes on the side aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you do have at your place, I ask if you will consider a supplemental agenda item. And this is regarding consideration of approval of ambulance franchise agreement for coastal medical transport.
Now we have a text in front of bullet. Here none.
Coastal medical transport has submitted a franchise agreement to provide ambulance transportation in Edchcombe County. Edchcombe County citizens could benefit from having coastal medical transport as a non-emergency ambulance transportation service. To help meet the high demand of transporting our bed confined patients to in and out of counties. County doctors' appointments, local hospital discharges, routine recurring care appointments such as dialysis. Currently, Edchcombe County EMS non-emergency division is maximizing all opportunities to transport patients. However, the demand is now beyond our capability to manage, considering prioritizing set uh nine one one emergency calls for service. Uh prioritization of recurring dialysis non-emergency transport and inability of staff non-emergency transport. Units due to uh professional demand, uh I do recommend that you approve the franchise agreement for coastal medical transport.
Is there a motion? Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes on the side aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here none, this approved. Next, Edchcombe County, ABC Board. Mr. Kevin Wiggins is recommended for real point, and he's not related, is there a motion to real point?
Don't move.
Second, question? All in favor, let me know by the votes on the side aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here none, here is real point. After this, there are leases for review and approval, Mr. Evans.
I'm happy to answer any questions if you want to.
Here are no questions, uh ain't hardly any questions. Is the motion approved? Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes on the side aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here none, this report, contracts for review and approval, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir, you see, we have a number of contracts, three of these, these exceed the fifty thousand dollar limit that I can approve. Um so they are contract for Dr. James Winslow. Um contract with uh Edchcombe Public Schools for the state funds for school nurses. And then finally, uh healthcare for inmates, IMS correction, healthcare. I do want to uh uh update or correct that number for that contract for uh healthcare in detention center. Um they're going to be starting their services in September, so actually ten months, they'll be providing. So it'll be a total contract amount of four hundred sixty two thousand for those ten months. Uh happy to answer questions that you might have on those three or any others, but I do recommend that you.
Any question for a good motion? Here none, is there a motion? Second. All in favor, let me know by the votes on the side aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here none, they are approved. Uh departmental reports for review, are there any questions? Um, when I think you need to, you need to bring your attention.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask uh Mr. Antoine Brown at Mercy Services to come forward. Uh he's gonna give you uh tornado damage overview and update, um and have a resolution like to consider that as well.
Alright, good evening. Alright, so I'm gonna give you an update as relates to the tornado event, uh Wednesday, July nineteenth. Uh here in Edchcombe County, first and foremost, just wanna thank the first responders and people. Uh everyone that had a hand in helping with the response and and moving towards the recovery phase uh that we're in now. It is on, yeah, there we go, okay. Alright, so just a, a little bit of a brief, um so of course, we were uh impacted by EF three tornado about twelve forty three. Uh on July nineteenth, uh the total impact here in Edchcombe County uh was about eight point eight miles. Um it was in the county for about sixteen minutes, we saw the width of the tornado anywhere from a third to a quarter of a mile wide at certain points. Um impacts that we have, we had uh two churches, uh chicken house, uh commercial agricultural farm, uh solid waste convenience site. Uh then we had twenty eight uh total residences. Uh happy to report, we had no fatalities, uh we did have two uh subjects with life threat, with life threatening injuries. Uh on the day uh of the tornado, uh and we also had one with none life threatening issues, everyone has been discharged. Uh from the hospital at this point, so we're happy to report that. Uh these are just some pictures, uh utilizing our drone course, they kind of cover some of the area. Uh this is the Morning Star Church Road area near uh Commissioner Powell's home. Uh this is drawn footage of the Coker Town Road. Area, just kind of surveying some of the damage. Uh with this tool we have, we were within an hour of the tornado moving out of our county, we were immediately able. Uh to launch this and begin to assess other damages um in, in connection with our uh damage assessment team here locally. I'll try to move forward as this, there we are. Okay, so now moving towards recovery, um immediately at the hand of our chair commissioner. On Saturday, Saturday, July twenty second, we held a tornado survivors meeting, uh that was at Phillips Middle School. Uh there, we were able uh to, to kind of convene um all of our tornado survivors to try to really get a grasp on what the unmet needs. And and to figure out, uh to begin the recovery process. Um, on Sunday, July twenty third, of course, Governor Cooper and his team came uh and visited the county. With the emergency management director, Will Ray Kane. Um as well, to kind of survey so we can move towards, again, getting to where we need to be to start uh the recovery process. Uh we did ho- hold a meeting with the state recovery team on Monday, uh July twenty fourth at the Rock Mountain Event Center. Um there, the state uh brought down their, the actual assessment team. Uh we used the state to tap into federal dollars, and so they came and began uh to assess the damages. Um of all of our residences and commercial structures that were involved. Uh really two lenses that we have uh to, to be able to tap into uh funding uh for our uh folks that were impacted. Uh the homeowners, we needed uh twenty five homes of forty percent or greater damage. Uh we were looking specifically at uninsured or underinsured homes. Um and then local government municipalities, we needed uh uninsured expense of ten thousand and at least one percent um of our county operating budget. Uh we did not um meet uh these thresholds uh as a county. As you can see, um it, it's kind of broken down here a little bit, so we have uh affected minor, major and destroyed. Uh so we have a total of five homes, going from the top, had a total of four homes that were affected. Uh three of those four were insured, minor, uh we had a total of eleven homes, seven of those were insured. Um and then major and destroyed is really what we get into, using those numbers for the calculation of trying to get for the individual assistance. Uh the twenty five homes at forty percent or greater. Um and remember, that's underinsured or uninsured, and so of the, the thirteen that were major, we had four homes that were uh insured. Um and then of the destroyed, we did have one home that was uh in insured. This is kind of the track of um the forestry service kind of came in and I did a track of our timber uh damages. Uh so you kind of see this here, uh in Edchcombe County, we were about three hundred and twenty thousand uh dollars of estimated damage. Uh in, in timber, about two hundred uh and twenty two total acres. Man, that's the bestest, same information. Um so our next steps, uh kind of, uh this is a continuing process. Uh we're constantly working with uh the state long-term recovery team, uh we had a meeting today. Uh some of the priorities you kind of see here from our partners, um United Way again is still continuing to provide a financial support. Of the citizens impacted, uh we understand that, that debris removal is a, is a big thing here. Um and so we're really to, um to, to begin to uh remove some debris from the right of ways. Um over to the right is a barcode, uh QR code, excuse me, from United Way. Uh they have a lot of uh partners and folks in the community who want to come out and help, they have chainsaws and trailers and equipment that they can use. That they want to go out and help, um and so they're kind of serving as our central point. Or our hub for all of our volunteer organizations to kind of, to connect and uh kind of have a plan of action uh for Edchcombe County. So they're kind of leading that force. Um if there are citizens that still have unmet needs, we've been really aggressive uh locally and with the state team as far as reaching out. Um going door to door and connecting with citizens who were impacted uh by the tornado. Um if, if we've missed someone or if there's still an unmet needs, we encourage citizens to call uh two one one, two one one is a, a service that. That's provided by the state that we pay for, um and essentially it serves as a hub as well, and so. They're professionals on the other line that can connect you to um any type of resource that still may be needed. Any question? That's exactly, that that that's that's a great question, so. Uh at the meeting we did, there was a disaster information sheet which specifically asked uh for unmet needs for all the attendees and even the. The folks who could not make it, we personally took the forms out to their homes. And then were able to kinda survey and see what those uh needs are. We do have those, um part of it, it's a clause on the disaster form. Uh that it asks um uh the people who were impacted if we could share that with local state and federal partners. And if they sign, we do, so so far, uh we have shared it with American Red Cross, and that's how they've been able to connect with a lot of folks. Um in United um as well, so. Yeah, right, so the the point per, the point, Commissioner, I would say. Uh what we're trying to do is essentially hub everyone because we get calls every day, and so we we're constantly meeting with United Way. Um our long-term recovery partners that the Baptist um have been very active, and so a lot of those. Uh partners are all coming together through United Way to have conversations about what our next step should be, so we all stay in sync and moving forward together.
And is someone making sure that we have equity, you know, equality, really?
Yes, absolutely.
And and I will say, just just to add that uh uh Mr. Brown mentioned, we had a meeting this morning with representative from the emergency management talking about funds for. Unmet needs, and it was a promising meeting. Uh they've been working very hard. I mean, they know the importance, not just for us, but even places in Nash County outside of the door, uh outside of doorches that was not declared. There are still many unmet needs, and so uh the state has been very active in identifying funds, and so. Um uh we were told today that we should know something definitive, uh at least which direction we can move in by the end of the week. It will likely be a memorandum of agreement that will have to come back before this board, if there are gonna be some funds that will pass through us. A lot of it will be working, these agencies working directly with the homeowners that won't necessarily have to come through us. But some of that like debris removal, for example, will come through the county.
Any questions, Mr. Mr. Brown?
But e- even though we had good support, a promising meeting, we do have a resolution, I don't wanna forget that.
Go ahead, sir.
I I just wanted to mention that uh I attended church on Sunday at the. New Star Christ Church of Christ in Rock Mountain, and we all want this power to know that our prayers are with your and your family.
Look, yes, we have the resolution, it's in your packet, uh and the resolution basically says, even though I know the state is working hard to identify funds. Uh it is requesting, uh you know, it is describing the damage impact we had here in the county. And um asking the state uh please find, see if they can find any funds to uh to help us address some of these unmet needs. I I mentioned this to Mr. Joe Stanton from the Emergency Management Office, State Emergency Management Office today, and he said he thought this would be a real good thing for the county to to adopt. And it's uh it's just behind, it's in the uh department head. Um report section.
Go ahead.
If we wanna approve that, I just wanted to make comment about, but we can prove that.
Go ahead, we'll make comment, go ahead.
Okay, I my mine wasn't about about that thankful for that, but I was just looking through these after lists, so if you wanna. We can vote on that resolution while we're we're there, and now I want to just mention comment about water.
Is there motion to approve that? Second. Question?
Just in the uh in the departmental reports, I just wanted to comment on the water, and so.
Go ahead.
I I'd spoken, when I saw the water meters, I I'd spoken to Mr. Matthews this afternoon. Um about kind of where that funding was coming from and how that was being done. But in that process, you start to look at these these after lists and these department reports, and a lot of this stuff can get swept under the rug. But the water department this month has a seventeen percent loss ratio. If you look at the previous reports, we're averaging thirty-eight percent loss, so I just wanna acknowledge publicly the work that they are doing. And we're out there in the summer making our water system better. I mean, that that is real money to the county in making a better water system. And they're working in the dead heat of summer. Last month, it was a twenty-four percent, this month is seventeen percent. We've never been, we've been at twenty-eight percent the month before that. We've never been below thirty percent in any month before that. So that is tangible work that they are doing for us. So thank you to him. I know he had a meeting that he couldn't be here, so couldn't say that to him, but wanted to be on there and we've seen it.
Another comment, so on the department reports. Any comments from the board?
Um under manager's report, you see have the workforce development indicators. Uh uh the monthly report, monthly update, also the TDA uh financial report. I do wanna mention briefly as far as an update on uh County Line merger. Um the what the school system calls the design team, uh it's been a group that they uh gathered, I guess, over a year ago. And uh they they reconvened that group, uh they really started, excuse me, started to get into some details about. How they might use those four school buildings when the County Line mergers happen, um how they plan, may assign. Uh grades to those schools, students to those schools, they're looking at different scenarios, so they haven't made final decisions on that, but I just wanted this board to be aware. That they're working in that level of of detail at this point. Um uh also, um there's another committee, we call it the County Line merger committee. Which uh both superintendents, both county managers, chair of boards, um as well as attorneys, we've been meeting um every couple of months or so. Um we had a meeting about a month ago, we talked, we're starting to now get into some of those granular details. In fact, we have a meeting, uh our next meeting tomorrow. And we'll be talking, they're looking at details like assets that will have to be transferred, so just wanted to, again, wanted this board to be aware. That the work and the planning is getting into that level of discussion. Also, wanted to make sure that this board is aware, um I'm sure you'll remember that uh Rock Mountain Edgewood CDC built. About sixteen, seventeen years ago, a building at Fountain Park. Um just across from what was the women's prison, and it was a, it was a small business incubator, operated for a long time. They had a couple of anchor tenants, uh including Northland Department of Revenue. What used to be Employment Security, now ENC Works was there and a few other uh tenants. They lost uh revenue uh office at call center, moved out several years ago. Um and long story short, in the last few months, they've lost their last tenant. And so they have some interest in selling the building so they can reinvest those funds into other projects like crosses at sixty-four. Um we've had several conversations about the possibility of that building being used for some. Type of high school, high school option in Rock Mountain area as it relates to County Line merger. Um in the meantime, you'll remember that uh backward Triangle Tire was planning to come to the county. Part of the incentive was we're gonna build a training center in Kingsborough Industrial Park. With Triangle Tire backed out, Goldley Foundation pulled those funds back, said if another project comes, let's call. Uh the Community College had received a state appropriation of two and a half million dollars to put uh. Equipment in that training center, and they had that grant agreement in hand still. Um and so after some discussion about best use of those funds, talking with uh our representative uh Willingham. Those funds now through state budget office have been re-appropriated. Um or um redirected to be able to purchase that building at Fountain Industrial Park. To be used as some type of high school option, and we still have lots of details to work out about that. We're having ongoing conversation between. Community College and the school system, uh the the school system, their committee as they meet, they're putting that into the conversation. As when they're talking about, you know, where to put students and that kinda thing, so. Um still some things to be worked out about that, but I want you to be aware of that. I think that's a really good opportunity. It's a forty thousand square foot building. Um it is in really good shape, it's got a good park in front and back of it. Um it it likely won't be big enough if for when we eventually transition all four hundred and fifty or so. Student, high school students over to Edgewood Schools. Um so we're looking at other funding to possibly either build something on to it or building something next to it. Um you'll remember that the state several years ago created what they call the Need-Based Capital Improvement Fund. And they're using lottery dollars to help counties build school facilities. It used to be a requirement that if you got those funds to build a new school, they would withhold your lottery proceeds for three years. That provision has been removed, so now it's just it's it's total rent funds. We've seen some counties get as much as forty and fifty million dollars of rent. So we're having conversation about us exploring that as a funding opportunity as well, so. Still lots to be discussed, lots to be worked out regarding that, but I did want you to know, number one, the progress that. Those two committees are making and moving towards um preparing for the County Line merger that is, you all know, maybe some of the public don't know. That by state statute is it's gonna happen next fall, it has to happen. We have to have a plan in place by November of this year. Uh and second thing to let you all as a board and the public know about this opportunity now has been presented to us by this building at Fountain Park. Uh which I think is a really good opportunity.
You know, the women's prison?
Yes.
Remember, there's an old facility that young people have have been occupying?
Yes.
How close is that to where you're talking about this building? Cause to me, it's like right in the same facility.
Well, the the women's prison has been closed for years. My understanding is the state is look at, looking at repurposing that as to some type of uh. State emergency response facility or something like that. Um the the youth development center that you're talking about, I guess it's probably about a mile down the road or so. I mean, it's very secure. Uh I actually have to kinda know where it is to to be able to find it back there, but I I can certainly see.
And you know, they closed off this road that goes then, I think that's gonna be inconvenient because they closed that road off that goes to.
It is. It used to be a a much more direct access coming off of three oh one, right across the train track, as you know, when they built the intermodal site, they closed that crossing. Um so you do have to kinda go around and get to it, and 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 that is a little bit uh in inconvenience. Um but I think for the opportunity that we have to get this building, uh likely at, you know, cost of county, at least the purchase of the building. Um is something I think. Lots of decisions to be discussed and made, certain opportunities for you all have opportunity for more input and final decision about how we look for.
I I just take it back on what you're saying, I think it's. Because of our, the northern end of the county, they serve those children right there. And then you've got rocking outside of the county, they serve children right there too, so that would be an easy fix for what we're trying to do. Especially for the northern.
Now, what times you're being armed, where is it?
House, house, Texas.
No, no.
A clarification on that, is that we're not saying that we're gonna build a high school there. We're not saying that as a board by by us doing that.
Uh 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 I I don't think that, I sent some my discussion, it would not be for a. I don't think it's a good site for a high school. It is a good site for for what we attend to, for the board, for the school board, I can tell you. Okay, okay, but not to build a high school, so.
A point of order that I want to make, that we're not endorsing building another high school.
We we need a high school for that end of the town, but I will not talk about that site as a high school. In fact, you know, when we're talking about a building of schools, you gotta have enough acreage, it's a whole bunch of things that you have to collect.
It's five acres behind, I think it's for me, five acres by the side that built, that they're looking at to the school, so get some information out there and then probably the little old company off.
But but the building of, building of school, school would issue.
Uh update on broadband project, uh you are aware that uh you know, funding from the state through the great grant, four million dollars was originally. Um awarded to a company called Cloudwise. Um they had to make some changes to their application, and once it was reviewed a second time. That that um allocation of funds was pulled back from Cloudwise and now it's been given to Brightspeed. Brightspeed, the representative was here a couple of months ago and gave a presentation. Um and so that, still working out details for that to move forward, so we're pleased about that. Uh I do do want you to know, and it is public record, that uh that Cloudwise has um has brought a lawsuit against the state. Um because they felt like that those funds were pulled back from them unfairly or whatever the case might have been. Um but I did have a, uh I had a call with representative from the uh state uh DIT office uh about a week or so ago. And they wanted to assure us that they're they're gonna, you know, vigorously, I guess, push back against that lawsuit, but they wanted us to know. That this is not gonna stop them from moving forward with us with Brightspeed, because they know how important it is for the county. They know how long that we have been waiting for this, so they just wanted to assure us that they're gonna push forward with us working with Brightspeed. So there will be some contracts and some things, we're already starting to have conversations about that. Um that will be coming back before you, but just wanted you to be aware. Also, uh they let me know that they are gonna work hard to try to fund a second project in Edgewood County. That has been their goal, to try to fund as many as possible, two projects in each county. And so they see the great need here, and they see that it's something that you all uh very much support, so they're gonna work on possibly awarding. Um a grant for a second project in the county, so. Um more details to come, and as those details come, I'll be sure to uh update you on that.
You know, when you go to church, you get asked all of these kinda questions. Why the internet's not working? Go to Red Hill up to her district, there's no such thing in that church. Uh church yesterday, uh a bishop came and asked the new minister, the first thing I want you to do is get broadband out here. How's he gonna do it? So my question is, um who would those churches talk to with Brightspeed? Cause I told you, you know, this is a little bit above what I can do, but I would be glad to give you the name of someone to talk to. Um and then a friend of mine told me about locality in Pine Tops, and I wanted to know, what do we know about them? And is it just specifically the Pine Tops? Cause she sounded like she had a good deal, I wanted to know, I'm here at Tarboro, can I get that deal?
Yeah, locality networks, I think it's called, they they've been there for a few years now. They bought out the old, I think it was Greenlight. System that was in and around Pine Tops, they bought that system, took it over, and have been just gradually expanding from there. We've we've heard a lot of positive things that they've got good service. Um I think, I think that their their interest is really just continuing to slowly build out from that hub there in Pine Tops. So far, they haven't seemed to have been necessarily interested in 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 jumping over to other areas of the county, they, I've heard from many customers. You're down for outside. Right, right.
Yeah, they do great, they do great service, but it is very small, barely in the town. And you know, when they come into your area, it's kinda like uh they have to a subway. It's like if, you know, if oil was pumped, that might not cut it, but sixty, you're probably. It it's that's kinda weird.
That's private, that's private money, I mean, that's that's a private entity, that's not taking any government money at all.
He he's not a partner. Uh to your first question, I will say, if you have anyone from church or pastor, whoever, if you wanna give me a name and phone number, I'll be happy to pass that along to. Uh contacts at Brightspeed, I'm sure Brightspeed would be happy to see, number one, is the church or whoever's asking. In their planned project area, if not, if it's out, you know, is it close enough that they might be able to?
I think it depends on the customer.
It is.
Right, I'm I'm not prepared with it.
I was gonna make a suggestion, but I'm gonna write it.
Yeah, but and and the great state funds are enabling them to now go into these more sparsely populated areas than they would be otherwise with their private investments. Um I briefly, I'll mention that, you know, we've uh we've had Rock Mountain Office, Health Department Office closed uh for some time now. Um part of which was, you know, uh just sort of uh interruption of COVID, but uh limited staff to be able to run two clinics. Um together, you know, we've talked before that it is important, we believe, to reopen that office because over half of our population, county citizens live inside the city limits of Rock. because over half of our population, county citizens, live inside the city limits of Rock Mountain. So we do wanna make sure we're available and able to provide services as much as possible. Excuse me, so we're gonna be open there five days a week. There'll be cleaning there on one day at least to start off and there's some other services, uh, provided. But I do invite you to, uh, join us on August the fourteenth at eleven AM. We're going to do a grand reopening of Rock Mountain Health Department office, um, and open it up for citizens who want to come in and see. If you're ready, welcome to join us. Um, I'll mention item H, update on the get off the list initiative. We did hold our first community engagement session on July thirty-first. We had very good attendance, I was pleased. Um, we, we received some good questions, good feedback. Uh, our goal is first of all, to let those who might not be aware, aware of what this get off the list initiative is. And that is we're targeting these lists that we're on and trying to, uh, work more collaboratively across different, um, entities and partners to work together to increase their good output so that we can move in a direction of, if not getting off some of these lists, at least move to a better place on some of these lists. Um, so we had really good community, um, um, attendance there. We'll be having our second one on the twenty-first, um, at the Rock Mountain Events Center beginning at six PM. And, uh, hoping for, um, hoping for a good turnout as well. Um, and I don't know, I wanted to steal Ms. Harris's thunder, but I know she did share some information with me, um, that she has been appointed, in some cases, reappointed to, uh, five committees with NACO. She continues to serve, um, there diligently and represent us very well with the National Association of Counties. I know they recently had their annual conference. Those committees include the Health and Counties Advisory Board, Immigration Reform Task Force, Membership Standing Committee Programs and Services Standing Committee and the Rural Action Caucus. So thank Ms. Harris for, NACO is a, is a very important, uh, partner for us as counties on a national level. Not only do they represent our interests as when it comes to federal government, uh, executive, particularly with Congress, uh, but also they are conveners of resources for us as counties and they're, we value them greatly. Thank Ms. Harris for, uh, her, uh, continued, uh, participation, uh, with them. Uh, that's all I was gonna bring to your attention for manager's report after answering the questions.
Any questions for the servants?
Just had a comment of the TDA report. Um, again, we kind of flipped over this report, but if you look at the budget for the TDA, there's a lot of people that go into this number, they're performing a hundred and forty percent above budget on occupancy tax. That's, that speaks to the people that work in our tourism and really are driving people to Edgecombe County. That number's really gonna go up this year. If you don't know, we've got, uh, the mountains to sea trail, bike tours coming to county. And Chamber has filled every single room that is available in Edgecombe County. They've filled in, with, in hospitals, I mean, in a hotel, and then they're going to Nash County as well. So they have asked citizens to help house people. They've got people sleeping on the con, so that is really, uh, speaks, speaks to the work that they're doing. Um, and again, a hundred and forty percent above budget.
At this time, uh, commissioners?
I did wanna report, I, I did go to Austin, Texas for our National Association of County Commissioners, um, and went to several sessions. Um, one of the sessions that were very interesting was how counties are getting creative with housing needs for the homeless. In fact, they, they did a tour and it showed these small kind of houses that they are building, I mean, the counties are building to help the homeless start having, you know, a place to go. And that was very interesting and, and take a look at that. And I also found out in my human services meeting that Edgecombe is not the only one who cannot find people to work in D S S, in the health department, it is all across the country. We found it out in our resilient counties, um, and talked about different ways of how to get people to come into those departments. It's gonna have to be more than just a race, it's gonna have to be an atmosphere, it's gonna have to be working environments. Um, it's just gonna be a, a lot of different things to bring people in and get them to stay. Um, that was wonderful and interesting. The most interesting was a crisis in America on civility, how we talk to one another, how we treat each other. Uh, that goes for citizens as well as elected officials to be civil to one another. So that was very interesting. Uh, we have, and some of those counties, they had people come into their meetings with guns. Uh, they had to show up at their homes because they disagreed with something that happened, you know, at board meeting. And then the, the very most important one was mental, the mental health side. You know, as I said, we, we're coming out of pandemic in twenty twenty-one, and a lot of our employees, a lot of our family members have not addressed the mental drain, um, that the pandemic had upon them. And I think we need to do something for our employees because I don't think we've really done anything in the mental health to really let them know, you know. I know we've got a number they can call, those kind of things, but we need to make sure that we are keeping up with mental health, um, our employees and our families, uh, because suicide rate has tripled, uh, since the pandemic. And believe it or not, we have people coming to work every day, even in D S S, who have to get funding from D S S to keep their families going. So, you got to remember. We all must, uh, talk privately, but, but, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any, any other comment?
I have one comment, um, and I think this is speaking to a citizen comment about leasing of vehicles. Is, my understanding is that that meeting is actually gonna happen on August eleventh. But for reiteration, we've asked, I've asked the board at our May meeting to have support, to have that by the budget. We still don't have it. And so this is the fourth meeting in a row that I've asked us to add information on leasing of vehicles that was supposed to be presented back.
Any other comments for? There are none, okay. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to close session discussing economic, technological development, uh, matter. It's a motion to go into closed session. Questions? All in favor, nobody votes aye? All opposed? Any none? Thank you for coming in, gentlemen.